You can come to the floor. Clerk for all.
Mayor Manning.
Present.
Councilman Petrosella.
Present.
Councilman McGraw.
Present.
Please read the minutes from our last meeting.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we dispense in the minutes of the previous meeting.
I second that.
We're accepting them as is. Call roll.
Councilman Petrosella.
In favor.
Councilman McGraw.
In favor.
Mayor Manning.
In favor. Is this part of reports of other committees or prior to?
Prior to.
We're inserting it in front of reports of officers and committees.
Tonight, we'd like to recognize somebody for the January 2019 Citizen of the Month, Mr. Jeff Rozano. Jeff is a lifelong resident of Waterville. He started helping out Mary's Soup Kitchen to raise donations and awareness about 10 years ago. Jeff organizes Fright for Hunger Haunted House every Halloween season at his home in Waterville. In lieu of an admissions fee, canned goods and non-perishable items are collected and donated to Mary's Soup Kitchen at Immaculate Heart of Mary Church. Jeff also helps St. Anthony's, Rourke Center in Troy, and Montgomery County Office of the Aging in Amsterdam. The 2019 January Citizen of the Month, Jeff Rozano.
This is a token of our appreciation. It's good timing for that, a nice fleece. And we have a certificate for you that recognizes you as Citizen of the Month. Thank you for all you do, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
And those who came with Jeff just for that don't feel obligated to stay for the rest. You're welcome to stay. Reports of officers and committees.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to begin tonight with a few announcements. First, in December, the CFA grant awards were announced, and the city received two grants. The first grant is a combined study with the City of Troy for the Congress Street Bridge. It's a $170,000 award to do a study to make it a little bit more pedestrian-friendly and multimodal-friendly to be able to get back and forth. And what we're looking forward to is possibly finding a way for it to drop into Hudson Shores Park to make it easier access than crossing 787. Also, the second grant is Hudson Shores Park Grant for Shoreline Stabilization and Amenities Upgrades. That's a $511,700 award to make upgrades to Hudson Shores Park. Next, I'm proud to announce some recent hires that the city has made. At a ceremony on Monday, the Police Department promoted Officer Brian Murray to Sergeant and sworn two new hires for the department, Matt Cusson and Tom Sapansky. We've also hired a part-time worker in the Water Department, Mike Duffy, is a former Water Department employee, recently retired from the City of Cohoes' Water Plant, and he's going to be working part-time up at the filter plant to join Dave Dressel's team. I'm also excited to announce the hiring of Chief Tom Garrett as the new chief of the Waterville Fire Department. Chief Garrett has over 40 years of service, fire service, and experience, including 22 years as chief of the Troy Fire Department. And then lastly, we have posted openings for the laborer positions in the General Services Department because of two openings there. One person was transferred to the Water Department, and Tom Sapansky, who originally worked there, now with the Police Department. So we have some openings, and we'll be accepting applications until February 1st. And then lastly, at the beginning of the year each year, what we like to do is 2018 departmental reviews. And so we put together the schedule for that. It'll be posted on the website. Each week, a department head will be coming in and giving a presentation on all the operations from 2018, so they can give you a review on what the staff did in the previous year. And that will begin next week. But sorry to disappoint, I'll be leading that one in place of Chief Rob Conlin, who recently retired. That'll be on the Fire Department, and then later in the month will be the General Services. So all that information will be up on the website and available, just to keep you in tune with what's planned for the beginning of the year. And that's all that I have for reports.
Whoops. Okay, old business.
In old business, we have a public hearing. A public hearing for the purpose of hearing those persons who wish to be heard regarding proposed Local Law Number Two for the year 2019, a local law to amend Chapter 245 Trees of the Code of the City of Waterville.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Actually, we passed this law previously, and the public hearing is to hear public comment on changes to that original law. And Jordan, you want to outline that changes, just so we can be very specific on that.
Yes, thank you. So this is Chapter 245 of the Code of the City of Waterville, and the local law proposes a revision to Chapter 245-4B regarding the fee for obtaining said permit. It used to be $50 per tree, but the proposal is to make it $50, which must be paid upon the filing of the application for permit, so not per tree. There's also a proposed revision to Section 245-8 and 245-10 with respect to trees that were planted by the city during city infrastructure projects on 19th Street and on 3rd Avenue. So the previous local law would put the onus and the responsibility on the homeowner. But the proposal is, and I'll just read it because it's pretty straightforward, "Upon written notification to the general manager that any tree planted during city infrastructure projects on 19th Street and in bio-retention units on 3rd Avenue is in need of removal, the city will, upon review and approval of the general manager or building inspector, remove the tree or trim the root system." And then there's another section with the same language with respect to dead or diseased trees. Okay? And that is the sum and substance of that local law.
Okay, would anyone want to wish to speak on those topics?
Hi, my name is Paul Farr. My address is 508 8th Avenue, Waterville. I'm the secretary of the City Waterville Tree Committee. Our chairman, Lois Gundrum, was supposed to be here tonight to speak on behalf of the committee resident, who has an issue with the tree. Unfortunately, she couldn't make it, and she asked me to step in for her. So the resident, her name is Susan Sandoval, and she has a linden tree in front of her house that's located at 810 19th Street. And the statement is read, "Years ago, there was a tree planted in front of my house when my daughter was young. Bees associated with that tree stung her in the face. Revor hurt to the doctor because her face was all swollen. The doctor said she was allergic to bees things and gave us a letter to that effect. He brought the letter to Bob Carlson, who had the tree removed, and said that there would never be another tree planted there again. As part of the 19th Street project, a tree was put in as part of the 19th Street renovation project. I pointed out that there wasn't supposed to be a tree there, and the workmen said that there would be a little tree. He assumed that there would be no bees or bugs associated with the tree. A little tree has been pruned several times by myself in the city because its branches grew over to the house. It has sap and attracts bees. I pressure washed the house three times each summer to get the sap off the house. The city has sprayed to kill the bees as well. The tree seems very unhealthy, with mushrooms sprouting up at the base, and its roots are raised, erasing the bricks that were installed around it. Soon sidewalks land will be affected. I believe this tree is unsafe and should be removed. I do not feel I should be responsible for the removal of this tree because I don't, I didn't want it there in the first place and did not get accurate information when the tree was installed. Respectfully submitted, Susan Sandoval, today's date." The reason I'm bringing this up is, in one of the revisions, was the responsibility of the homeowner, based on the information, again, she's not here, so I doubt the identity of the information that was given. But it seems as though that she didn't want the tree there, was told that the tree that was going to be placed in there was not going to affect her daughter's allergic reaction to the bee, and evidently it was. It was pointed out by Lois Gundrum that this linden tree does attract bees. So we felt as if that the communication from this point on, when it comes to the trees, should be improved between any kind of tree project that the city's involved in, that we should get more input from the residents, whether they be the residents, the homeowners, business owners, and also the city crews as well. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, and see if you would want to formally have an opinion or have any questions as to whether or not this should be amended. Thank you.
Oh, can you, do you have a copy of the statement that she made?
I don't have a copy.
Do you still need that, or?
I can.
Just to make it a little easier for Scott, let's just state everything.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, I have a few opinions on this, but we don't want to wait until I've got everybody 's done.
Is anyone else done? Guess that's a yes. Go ahead. You want this as part of the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
So I act as a member of the Tree Committee as well, as well as Paul LaBociaire, Mr. Farr's brother, Bill, and Lois as the chairman. This was brought to the attention of the Tree Committee to make this change, so that's where I think this started from, coming into this, and Jordan put it together in this draft. I do have to be open, it's in the minutes of the Tree Committee meeting, but I'm against the change for the dead and dying trees on 19th Street and approving of them. In multiple areas of the code, it states that property owners are responsible for the property, probably right of way between their home and all the way up to and including the curb. And that's the way that it is throughout the city. And I feel that to make an exception in one specific area kind of compromises what that says throughout it, and makes an exception, you know, in specific instances. I think this is Sandoval's instance, it's very unique, but to change the law for that, I think would compromise the code and what it's set there for. It's my opinion to be heard, you know, publicly and then, of course, to the internet.
I can just make one other comment.
Sure.
And then this was explained by me before at the last meeting, just to be specific again, the substance of the law, we talked about the one section, the $50, you're aware of that, and then the other two sections, 245-8, we're adding a new subsection E with that language that I read, and then Section 245-10, we're adding a new subsection D. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more from you folks on that?
Just a question.
Sure.
If the city put him in during their...
Could you, it's a formal hearing, so.
I'm sorry.
No problem. Just, you know, name and address and...
My name's Eva Thompson. I live at 810 6th Avenue. I was just wondering if the city put him in during their beautification, refurbishing, fixing up. Why wouldn't the city be responsible for him if they're dead and dying?
That's a good question, but most of the trees in the city were put in by someone other than who's responsible for them now. So a point was made that to have the law written for the whole city, which has exceptions in it, isn't really fair to those. So if you had a tree in front of your house, the city could put in 6th Avenue?
Yeah. No, I don't. No, I was just wondering.
If you did, you'd be responsible, but someone on 19th Street is not, so. The law was written to create a communication method to file a permit to do, to put it up or take it down. And in this case, the comment that was just read into the record, a permit was never filed. So I'm just following up on your statement. Here's a good point, and it'll be on the record.
Mayor, I have a point too.
Sure, you want to end the public hearing?
Yes, please. The main concern I have is the trees, maybe specifically to 19th Street, there were several that were put up. Some did die, and one or two were removed. I know there's another one, I believe, in front of the pharmacy that's in bad shape, and it probably needs to be removed also. And the big question is that, you know, we have a tree, we have a tree pit there, you know, it's cut out with the brick. So in this particular case, if we don't consider this the city responsibility, are we prepared to tell the pharmacy, one, you got to take it down, and two, you got to plant a new one?
I don't know, this doesn't talk, say anything about having to replace the tree.
Well, in the case of like the tree, one of the responsibilities of the Tree Committee is to decide whether or not there's trees that would need to be replaced, and it's really, you know, something, their recommendations or their requirement to say if you take one down, and in essence, if you have a tree pit and it's meant to be there, and that was the whole purpose, you want to be able to plant it back in. So I'm guessing if you're going to carry the law the way through, is you're telling the pharmacy, take it down, dig it out, and plant a new one.
That's not what the law says, is it?
No, but it goes further with the responsibility of the Tree Committee.
The Tree Committee, the name of the government's opinion, they write a story, it's in record.
Okay, well, that's true too. I mean, except for Jeremy's opinion.
As part of the Tree Committee and as the general manager, yes. If you want that stuff in the law or out of the law, it has to be rewritten. Right now, the change in the law says you need to file a permit to take the tree down and get permission to do so. It's pretty straightforward. And we wouldn't be having discussion if we didn't implement the law in the first place.
Oh, it's true. No, I agree. I think the law, I think it's a good law, I think it just needs a little bit of tweaking at some. I think that's what we're planning on doing.
How about you folks? Anything else? Okay, close the public hearing? Is this on the agenda, you guys?
It's on the agenda.
All right. I'm not clear of that one tweak, so we have to call it, move on, or talk about it post-public hearing here.
That's at the discretion of the council. It's on the agenda today for a vote, but we've been in the situation before, if there are recommendations to revise the language, then the process starts all over again with respect to having another draft, having another resolution advertising for a public hearing, and then another public hearing. So the public is aware of the changes with respect to any draft of the local law.
We can redraft it. So we're not ready to go on as is, so we'll take what we heard at the public comment, redraft it. Very good. Process is working.
So this is being removed from consideration in the agenda this evening?
We continue to vote it down or remove it? Yes. Remove it to digest what we heard at the public hearing.
And is there a, I'm sorry for asking another question, but I'm going to ask it. Is there a direction with respect to what it is that is being requested as far as any subsequent draft of this local law?
Can you divide it to?
Well, I'll say that I didn't hear any public comment supporting the change, so I would say that we don't do the change. The only comment was against the change, and then there was some comments about further refinement, so. I don't think we should pass a law where certain areas are off the hook, so to speak.
Well, there was a comment regarding the change, right, the four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
The first one was the $50.
Oh, yes.
Now we got to vote on it first, and then we'll just take...
Well, it's all in one, so.
All the evidence.
Good point. The two changes, I'm personally for the fee change, which is actually already been implemented, hasn't?
Not yet.
Okay. All right. The fee change makes sense, and we had a case where someone wanted to take down six trees, so that's what brought that to light. I don't think there was any comment about changing the law on 19th Street and 3rd Avenue, because you're not going to have to take care of trees and make it more likely. So we redraft it, get comments to Jordan, we'll republish it, and we can't do that until we have a draft. That's what I learned from the story. All right. Very good. New business then.
In new business, we have the first reading of ordinance number 1993. An ordinance of the City of Waterville authorizing Mayor Michael P. Manning and Director of Finance, Michael F. Mcneath, to execute a quick claim deed conveying title to lots 35A and 37A in the City of Waterville to Patricia Fonda.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we move on the ordinance this time.
It's a first reading?
No, you can...
Oh, it is a first reading, but you can vote.
By unanimous consent.
Gotcha. It's a second then. Okay. Discussion?
Yes, I'll try to be brief. So back in, if I can just refer to my notes, please. So back in 1958, there was an ordinance that was adopted by the City of Waterville that confirmed the sale of lots that were abandoned Erie Canal, okay? And out of the many lots that were sold, there were two lots that were deeded to, I believe Sisters, her last name was Shannon. That deed was authorized and was signed by the mayor and the director of finance back then, but that deed was never recorded in the Albany County Clerk's office. So if you picture, you have two lots, and they refer to properties in the City of Waterville of 340 3rd Avenue, the back, and then 336 3rd Avenue, the back portion of that lot. Those are identified as lots 35A and 37A. And the reason why we're talking about this and we need an ordinance is because there was an individual, Patricia Fonda, who was purchasing the properties, 340 3rd Avenue and 336 3rd Avenue, from her siblings, and the previous owner was her mother. She is deceased. And before that, Sisters owned the property, her sisters owned the property, so it's been in the family, to my understanding. So in order for Patricia Fonda to purchase a property, there needs to be sufficient title to the property. They need all of the property as opposed to just half of the property. So this ordinance is confirming the prior conveyance back in 1958. It authorizes a deed from the City of Waterville to Patricia Fonda for those two lots and allows for the recording in the Albany County Clerk's office. So this is done by ordinance, and if it's approved, then there's a deed that's drafted, it's going to be signed by the mayor and the director of finance, provided to Patricia Fonda's attorney for her signature of the recording forms, and it's going to be recorded in the clerk's office. Any question? Sorry, it was the best way I could explain it.
Okay.
Good job.
So we can pass this right now?
Correct.
Move on. Okay, call roll, Scott.
Councilman Petrosella.
In favor.
Councilman McGraw.
In favor.
Mayor Manning.
In favor.
Next, we have Resolution Number 9579. Council of the City of Waterville hereby approves the 2019 Animal Shelter Agreement between the City of Waterville and the Mohawk and Hudson River Humane Society.
I'd like to make a motion to accept Resolution Number 9579 as written.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
It's our annual agreement with the Humane Society for any stray animals that are picked up and brought down there, usually dogs, but there is in this year's summary of these, cat and other domestic animals that they do accept.
Okay. Call the roll.
Councilman Petrosella.
In favor.
Councilman McGraw.
In favor.
Mayor Manning.
In favor.
Next, we have Resolution Number 9580. Council of the City of Waterville hereby approves an agreement between the City of Waterville and the New York State Energy Research and Development Authority.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we move on Resolution.
My second then.
Discussion?
So this is, we've talked about this many times at the meetings, this is the final step for receiving a grant that we're receiving from NYSERDA. This is, to get this grant, we had to do a little bit of background work that was done by the city clerk and the building department to be a clean energy community, keep on with our clean energy initiatives. This particular project will take place in all of the city-owned buildings, so it's an $80,000 grant. There's no match to the grant. This $80,000 will replace all of the city's buildings' lights and all the city-owned street lights, which basically is 19th Street. City-owned decorative lights that are similar to that, that we have in parks, will also be replaced, and the lights in the pavilion at Hudson Shores Park, so all of the city-owned lights will be replaced. So no cost to the city, and replacing those lights not only puts in better lights, but will reduce the cost for the electricity for those lights. So really big grant, reducing the carbon footprint, reducing costs, $80,000, and this is the contract with NYSERDA to execute.
Excellent. Any questions?
Nope.
Call the roll.
Councilman Petrosella.
In favor.
Councilman McGraw.
In favor.
Mayor Manning.
In favor.
Next, we have Resolution Number 9581. Council of the City of Waterville hereby approves an agreement between the City of Waterville and Weston and Sampson, located at One Winter Circle in Albany, New York, for a period of one year commencing on January 1st, 2019, and ending on December 31st, 2019.
I'd like to make a motion to accept Resolution Number 9581.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
So this is an annual contract with Weston and Sampson Engineers to provide water and sewer administrative engineering. Different tasks throughout the year that require engineering. If we need something quick, we can get right to Weston and Sampson. They've been our water sewer engineers for over 40 years. And an example of some of the things that they would be doing under this contract, they do our dam inspections at the upper and lower dams and at the service reservoir that are taking place right now. So this is our annual agreement, there's no, there's set costs, of course, for each different member of Weston and Sampson's team that is outlined, but it's on a need basis, so no specific projects for this, but gives us the opportunity to do things at a quick time with our water and sewer.
They're going to be inspecting the one that's, let's say, it's behind 24th Street?
Yeah, yeah.
What do they call that?
That's the lower dam, like behind 24th Street.
That's the upper dam, right?
Yeah, and then the upper dam is the one up above Highland Club, like Witch's Tower up that way.
Okay.
And then they also, the service reservoirs are also considered a dam, so they have to do an inspection up there as well.
And they haven't done that yet?
This year.
Or you want to go to, you want to issue?
They do it every January, so this is just updating the contract and getting that work started.
They can inspect it with the snow?
They can, yeah. I mean, not with two views, hell.
Well, that's what I was expecting.
Yeah, I mean, if it gets to the point where they can't get it with them, they can totally have it.
All right, call the roll.
Councilman Petrosella.
In favor.
Councilman McGraw.
In favor.
Mayor Manning.
In favor.
Next, we have Resolution Number 9582. Council of the City of Waterville hereby approves a lease agreement for the City of Waterville's KME Tower Ladder Truck between the City of Waterville and the Latham Fire Department, located at 226 Old Loudon Road in Latham, New York.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we move on this resolution.
My second then. Any discussion?
So a few months back, Chief Conlin and I were contacted by members of the Latham Fire District. They had sold their ladder truck and had ordered a new one, and they needed something to fill the void in the meantime. This ladder truck that we would be leasing to them by this agreement is the ladder truck that we received on the grant. It's currently not in our lineup. We don't require it at this time. So this is the agreement with the Latham Fire District for them to utilize the truck probably for about 10 months while they're waiting. We can extend the agreement if we need to. And for that... And for that, they will cover all the expenses, the annual maintenance, the annual testing. They are ensuring the vehicle themselves and covering themselves and holding themselves accountable for anything with the truck. Also in this is that if at any time we go down or mutual aid has a truck that goes down and we do require this back, they will be giving it back to us if we require it. So, we can take it back at any time that we need it for our own services. Helping our partners to the west. Covering all expenses.
Questions? Comments? Call the roll.
Councilman Petruso.
I'm in favor.
Councilman McGrady.
In favor.
Mayor Manning.
In favor.
And Mr. Mayor, to the best of my knowledge, that's all we have in new business.
Appropriations and accounting?
We have nothing.
Next up?
There will be?
Yeah, hopefully there's one next time.
It's kind of lonely there. All right. Anything up here before we go to?
Hey, yeah, two quick ones.
Don't worry.
Two quick ones. The question last meeting was about the lights underneath the Congress Street Bridge?
Yes, I have a meeting with DOT tomorrow at 10 o'clock.
Which is good. You made a mention about the lights, that it was dark also underneath, going from Broadway to Hudson Shore's Park?
Yes.
Do you know that there's quite a few lights underneath there?
Yes.
Okay. And none of them are working, of course?
We've contacted DOT about that. They did a study that the lighting needed to be upgraded in that area and so we contacted DOT at the time to tell them about those lights and they said they were looking into upgrading them. So, I think they used that as a reason to not replace them in the meantime. So, that'll be part of the conversation tomorrow as well.
I didn't know, I didn't realize they worked because I'd never seen them on. And of course, now that I've seen them, I thought, oh, they probably would have been better for them. And do you have any thoughts again on that comment of the property at the reservoir?
I don't have any. I didn't get any information. We were actually supposed to meet and talk about land bank properties and then we had to cancel it. So, we had an opportunity to talk to them about it. So, there's a property adjacent to the reservoir that's owned by the land bank, Almigil Leuens. And so, we want to have a conversation with them to obviously try and acquire the land that way we can make sure that nobody develops or does anything wrong.
Is it a big parcel?
Relatively large. Bigger than the parcels next to it. But adjacent to our property.
Right.
Right off a boot form.
That's what it looked like.
Yeah.
Okay. Then we'll open the public comment period, Scott?
At this time, the council has authorized the public comment period. If you wish to address the council, you must step forward and state your name and address for the record and you will have two minutes to address the council on any matters you wish. At the end of your comment, the council may reply or choose to reply at a later date if they so choose.
Paul Uvan, 1500 12th Avenue, Waterbury. I wanted to ask a question in regard to the new lighting on 19th Street, but council moved quickly and I didn't have a chance. Do you think it's appropriate for the City of Waterbury to be in the electrical business? What I'm saying is, with the installation of the new lights, who's going to maintain them? We have a problem that is, as it is now with the existing lights. Don't you think you should try and make some kind of a contract or deal with National Grid when these are installed? If it's feasible, of course. Do have them maintain the lights and get out of the electrical business? One thing. Second thing, at the last meeting, I brought up potholes. I'd like to thank the general manager for following through and getting it done. There's one hole that they missed where the rail is showing good oversight that should be addressed because possibly someone could blow a tire or whatnot. So, if you consider the situation with National Grid or the maintenance of the lights, I think it would be appropriate. Thank you.
Good evening, Tatiana, 23 18th Avenue. I was wondering if we got anywhere with what was going to happen with putting signs upon the fencing? I may have just missed that meeting, but I'm just curious to know if we're still allowing that or if we're not or if we're just kind of leaving it alone or letting the highway people do it or what? And also, I'm curious to know if we're ever going to be needing AC in the civic center? I know it's really expensive, I was just wondering if that's like on the to-do list?
Sorry to say that it's not.
Okay, what about the, I don't know where I am, highway sign?
We haven't started that yet.
Just curious. I'm just being nosy.
Yeah, good one. We'll have to get that. Turns out there's a bunch of areas in the codes that address signs and they come out. We need to gather that up and clean it up, so. We tabled it while it was sign season so that we could live in peace. So, now we'll get back to it now. Thanks for reminding us.
Thank you, guys. Night.
Nina Thompson, 810 6th Avenue. There's been a lot of ruckus over trash collection. The mess left behind, the mess left by squirrels, crows, whatever. I myself have gone out and cleaned up my own neighborhood. I prefer it to be clean. Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald, for riding along with the gentlemen today during their collection, during their collection. And as you can see, when one is watched, one behaves very well. When one is not watched, one may tell you to fling a can this way and leave a bag over there or a can completely not collected. But I think now that people know they're watched, things may go a little bit better and a little bit neater in the city than has been happening in the past months.
Just wanted to make a comment. It was an interesting few hours this morning watching it, but I'll tell you though, it was also disheartening to see some of the messes that were there prior to getting there. And honestly, it had nothing to do with crows. It was just basically leaving, you know, bags left outside and the mess that was totally uncalled for on many occasions. And that was just before any of the trucks got there. And again, you know, they all make mistakes. I know they all do things, you know, when they're happy and watching, it's a little easier. But I'll tell you, I watched them walk, you know, that whole distance and it's a grueling, everyday event for them, you know? So, with that being, I think they do a pretty good job of that part. I think some of the residents, especially some of the other multifamilies could do a little bit better too to help out. I witnessed one lady just walking outside and just dumping their bag right on the ground. Just a couple of bags and then just walked right back in and the garbage can was sitting no less than two feet away.
Anyone else?
Jeff Foster, 1201 8th Ave., Waterbury. I'd asked many months ago about the, our fire truck and our ambulance, if we could get any money from the village of Green Island, being as we helped her down with the ambulance and we also have their name on our truck. If they could, you know, if we can get some money out of the maintenance of vehicles through them. Has anybody ever looked at that or is that able to do?
Well, when we bought our ladder, they paid for one-fourth of them. And the deal with the ambulance is we get the insurance revenue and they get, they don't get any, so.
But sometimes we don't get the revenue.
If the people don't pay, yeah. And I don't, haven't seen a study whether it's mostly Green Island people or not, but...
Well, I didn't know if there was any, like an annual maintenance, you know, fee that we could get for the ladder truck and/or the ambulance.
I don't know about the maintenance fee. In the mutual aid system, everybody uses everybody's trucks and that's considered... You make it up in the wash, yeah, yeah.
Well, it is theirs as well as ours, so it's like a, I don't know how that, that's not 50-50, but I don't know how that broke down.
Good point. I can't recall here, that's been a while now. They did pay for the cost of the truck, but I don't think they chipped in for maintenance, but we can check into that.
That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening?
Did we get a grant on that truck?
No, we got a grant for the engine, but not for the ladder.
You got it?
Don Whitehead, 1921 8th Avenue, Waterbury, New York. New city interactive mapping system, is that a work in progress?
It is, but it's up on the site.
But it's still under, it's still being worked on?
Or advancing, I guess.
Okay. You can go into the zoning map and bring it up to date?
Yeah, they do that through the county, so when the county updates their records, it gets updated on that.
But it's not the Waterbury zoning map that's there.
Oh, the zoning map. I apologize. Okay.
It's not even anywhere near correct. They also, the voting districts. Got four voting districts. Voting District 1, Voting District 2, Voting District 3. Don't have the wards to indicate which district people are in. It's not a very work, or a user-friendly program. If you type your address into the search thing, all it tells you is that's your address. Doesn't tell you who the owner is, doesn't tell you any information. If you play with the program long enough, you find out that when you finally get into the map and you double-click on your property, it brings up all your information. But it's not a very user-friendly program. The old program, you could just open a map and it showed the naming of all the owners for all the properties and all of the property codes. It doesn't do that anymore.
Once you click on it, right? It'll pop up in a box and you can get all the information?
If you go down the street level and you click on your property, it brings up a box showing the owner's name and all the information. But it used to be there. If you typed in the owner's name or the address, it used to open a box, a window, and it gave you all that information. It doesn't do that anymore.
A lot of it's not updated either. There's a lot of people that's, they have sold and their new owners aren't on there yet either.
Well, I was assuming that under the new update and all that, we're taking care of it, so. But some, again, some of the information on it isn't correct.
Okay, thank you. We did meet just last week to go over how it was working and everything and what we're looking to do to advance it, so I'll get back to that with some of those concerns as well.
Okay. Anyone else? For you new people, Don likes to go last, so.
Just one more comment. On the table, the amendment to tree law, still $50 a tree now? Do I remember that?
Correct.
Should have, maybe go back and...
There's some areas of the code that...
Okay. We'll work around it. Thank you. All right, we'll close. Anyone else? I'm sorry. All right, we'll close the public comment period and we have to go to a brief executive session, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to that. Stay for five minutes if you have to grab someone, but then we have to clear the room, so.
I'll make the motion that we adjourn.
So, we adjourn to executive session, we're going to be, I request that Council of Yordi Van, City Clerk Scott O'Reilly and Director of Finance Frank McNamee, present discussing the unit.
Scott, call the roll.
Mayor Manning.
Favor. Motion is favor.
Councilman Petruso.
In favor. Councilman McGrady.
In favor.
For general executive session.